I wanted to call to order the council meeting of January 11th. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Here.
Peg Conway?
Here.
Ed Hattenbach?
Here.
Tom Muthing?
Here.
Ray Warren?
Here.
Natalie Wolfe?
Here.
Scott Larmer?
Here.
Kevin Frank?
Here.
Jeep Wallace?
Here.
Rick Kay?
Here.
If everyone could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is the minutes from our meeting of December. Those were circulated in our PAC over the weekend, and then I know the vice mayor had one change which has been recirculated to everyone. Are there any other changes to those minutes? If not, we can consider the minutes approved. Next item on the agenda is our finance report for November 2015.
I'd like to report on the finances for November 15. Earnings tax collections for the month of November totaled a little over $186,000. This is up about 30 percent from November of 2014's collection of about $143,000. The year-to-date in terms of our collections is just a little over $2.5 million, which in total was down about 4.6 percent compared to 2014. Our estimate for earnings tax collection when we started the year was at $2.8 million. The village did not collect any real estate property tax during the month of November, and the local government fund netted a little less than $5,000 during that particular month. That brought our total revenue for the month of November at $254,000. The earnings tax collection being at 2.5, and we estimated 2.8, so we're about 90 percent of the way in terms of earnings tax collection. Overall revenue for the general fund was estimated at $4.4 million, and we're currently at $4.3 million, so we're about 97 percent collection rate at this point. The expenses for the month of November totaled $186,000, and our total expenses through the November 30th, $3.6 million. We had budgeted an amount of $4.3 million for our 2015 budget, so we have expended 83 percent of the budget as of the end of November. And that leaves our unencumbered general fund balance at the end of November at $4.5 million. So that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the manager? If not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and this will be recognition of service, and I think I'll come down there. First, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Councilman Doring, as we all know, at the last meeting, announced his resignation because of a conflict between OPERS and the Affordable Care Act. And Councilman Doring has been on council now four years. He's been elected three times, and this was kind of a surprise to all of us, and I know a surprise to you. We thought that there was going to be some ways to work it out, but those were not able to be worked out. But Councilman Doring has been tireless over this period of four years. I tried to go back and estimate how many committee meetings were held over those four years, and it is well in excess of 225 committee member meetings. And if I had to guess, you probably attended well over 200 of those, probably 210 to 215 at a minimum. And over that same period, the number of council meetings has been between 50 and 60. And Councilman Doring is a regular fixture at, be it the Board of Zoning Appeals, Mayor's Court, et cetera. He has been very involved in everything we do around council, and in fact, within Amberly Village. And I know Councilman Doring intends to continue to be involved. And we had a committee meeting last Monday, and the Councilman Doring was there as a member of the, as a resident, and again, was very willing to contribute, and we really do hope that you will continue to contribute. We have been searching for ways to ensure that he's able to continue his contributions, and one of those will be his continued involvement around everything we do, including the first suburbs where Councilman Doring has been very involved, and is able to continue to be involved. All it takes is a memorandum from myself to first out their suburbs, and that will be done. So, we wanted to recognize you for your service, and so we have a plaque recognizing you for your service, noting that you've been serving as a member of council from December of 2011 to the present, and I just want to thank you for everything you've done and look forward to continue working with you. Okay, we will now move on to committee reports, and the first committee meeting, or reporting will be the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on my agenda is to introduce ordinance amending the appropriations for fiscal year 2016. The purpose of, well, should I make the motion to adopt ordinance number 2016 to reduce appropriations from the 2904 Employee Severance Fund by $423, and from Fund Number 9903, the Valley Bean Escrow Fund, by $259.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2016-1, amending the appropriations for fiscal year 2016. And do you want to just explain real quick why this is necessary the month after we just approved the?
The purpose for this reduction of appropriations is the fact that these expenses were incurred and expended in the fiscal year 2015.
Okay, with that explanation, are there any other questions or comments from members? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2016-1. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Second item on my agenda is to introduce Resolution Number 2016-1, which is to authorize the village manager to enter into a memorandum of agreement with Charles E. Harris and Associates and Dave Yost, the auditor of the State of Ohio for required audits for the fiscal periods from January 1, 2014, through December 31, 2019.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-1, authorizing the village manager to sign a memorandum of agreement with Charles E. Harris and Associates and the auditor of State for our audit cycles between January 1, 2014, and December 31, 2019. Are there any questions or comments?
The audit, we are required to have an audit every two years, so this is the purpose of this, having this CPA firm perform this audit on the village. We received a group price, so it's going to make this fee a little bit less than what it was two years ago, and the fee for the next two audits will be just marginally, slightly higher than what we're going to be paying for this particular audit, somewhere in the vicinity of $13,000 per two-year audit.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-1. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
The next item, last item on my agenda, is Resolution Number 2016-2, which is to authorize the transfer of unclaimed monies to the Fund 9101, Unclaimed Monies Agency Fund. So moved.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-2, which authorizes the transfer of unclaimed monies to the Unclaimed Monies Agency Fund. Are there any questions or comments?
The purpose of this is any checks which have been written by the village and outstanding for a specific period of time must be segregated to a non-general fund, and in this case, we have $558.75 worth of uncashed income tax refund checks. And those, these funds will sit in this fund for approximately five years.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-2. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to the Police and Fire Committee.
Thank you. The Police-Fire Committee met on January 4th to review several purchase requests. The first two resolutions before us tonight, 2016-3 and -4, concern important protective equipment for our fire department. The first item is self-contained breathing apparatus, or SCBA, which is what the firefighters wear when they go into a fire so that they can breathe in the smoke. Our current equipment is from 1999 and has failed some inspections, is clearly out of date. The second item is a breathing air compressor and fill station, which is equipment used to refill the SCBAs. And this system is from 1983, so is very out of date, does not have a carbon monoxide detector, and it does not have a contained area for the bottles to be filled, which is a safety hazard. Both of these items are also major in that they are very expensive, almost $173,000 total. Fortunately, through the persistent efforts of staff, in October 2015, the village was awarded a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency to reimburse the purchase of SCBAs and the fill system. Staff then prepared specifications and advertised for bids. One bid was received from Vogel Pole Fire Equipment, so that is what I am presenting this evening at the recommendation of the Police-Fire Committee. I move that council adopt Resolution Number 2016-3, authorizing the village manager to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department, 22 units for a total of $130,070. So moved.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-3, authorizing the village manager to purchase the self-contained breathing apparatus for our fire department. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-3. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, and moving on to the next one, I move that council adopt Resolution 2016-4, authorizing the village manager to purchase air compressor and filling station in the amount of $42,500. So moved.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-4, authorizing the village manager to purchase air compressor and filling station for the breathing apparatus. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-4. All in favor?
Aye.
Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, the final resolution is for the purchase of two new police vehicles, specifically 2016 Ford Utility Interceptor Cruisers that have all-wheel drive and advanced track stability, which monitors and adjusts the brakes and throttle during turns. They will be purchased through statewide Ford, who was awarded the state contract this year. The cost for each is $27,677, for a total price of $55,355, and delivery is anticipated in the spring. As part of the police department's rotation of vehicles through various uses to maximize their useful life, four older vehicles will be removed from the fleet and sold or traded in. Each has between 70,000 and 102,000 miles and have begun incurring a lot of repair costs. The Police-Fire Committee recommended approval of the vehicle purchases, so I move that council adopt Resolution 2016-5, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase two new police cruisers under the State of Ohio contract. So moved.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-5, authorizing the village manager to enter into contract to purchase the new police cruisers. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-5. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, we'll now move on to the Streets Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to recognize my predecessor as Chair of the Streets Public Utilities and Sewer Committee, Bill Doring, who managed this committee incredibly admirably and with a lot of devotion and thoroughness, and so I thank you, and I hope I can fill your shoes. I'd like to request that council consider and pass Resolutions 2016-6, 7, 8, 9, authorizing the purchase of two 2016 GMC 3500 Crew Cab pickup trucks and a 2016 GMC double cab 1500 pickup truck, together with two snow plows. In addition, we'll ask council to consider and pass the motion Ordinance 2016-2, authorizing the village manager to dispose of certain vehicles. The committee met on January 4th, together with Mr. Chesney, Maintenance Supervisor, who shared with us the need to replace three trucks the village currently uses. Two of the trucks which we're looking, we're looking to replace, two trucks with the same model, two trucks. One truck is a 2000, one truck that is being replaced is a 2001 Dodge truck. The village was scheduled to be replaced five years ago. It's been in service almost 15 years. This truck has experienced considerable deterioration with sliding doors, unusable doors, sliding seats, light bars not functional, and the truck currently has over 100,000 miles on it. The replacement truck is a 2016 GMC 3500 Crew Cab. The cost, including the truck base price and additional village customization, just part of the resolutions, light bar, siren, lettering, is expected to be, as between base price and this customization, approximately $46,000. The cost will be offset with a trade-in of the old truck, about $7,600, to bring the final cost of about $38,590. The truck is going to be purchased through state bid. The second truck that's being replaced is a 2006 Ford 3/4 Crew Pickup Truck. While this truck only has 56,000 miles on it, it's been very unreliable. Indeed, after production and based on engine problem reports, it was viewed as a lemon. We've had considerable engine repair issues coupled with deterioration of suspension, electronics, and mechanical parts. Just this past year, the village spent almost $5,000 in repairs. The replacement truck will be the same as the truck I just mentioned, the 2016 GMC 3500. The cost, same base price of, as the truck I just previously mentioned, will be different customization to bring the, to bring the final cost a bit higher, $47,900, but that will be offset with the trade-in value of this current truck of about $16,500 to bring the final cost to $31,370, about $370. We asked Mr. Chesney, considering that the truck that we're replacing is considered a lemon, what makes us feel that the new trucks will not be lemons? And Mr. Chesney commented that this truck has received good reviews for reliability. In addition, both trucks will be fitted with a brine spreader enabling them to go into tight-fitting spots when treating village streets. The two trucks will also be fitted with snow plows. While these plows could have been purchased with the trucks via the state bid, Mr. Chesney learned that purchasing them from Caffenberger Equipment would be less costly to the village, about $9,000 versus about $11,500. So that's another reason why we have a separate resolution. The third truck that's being replaced is a 2001 Ford Expedition Truck. This was formerly used as a police vehicle that was transferred to the Maintenance Department about five years ago, and was primarily used by the Maintenance Department Supervisor. Most recent estimates for the repair of the vehicle, about $2,300, which was taken out of service, was greater than its value by up to about twofold. The cost of a new 2016 GMC 1500 pickup truck with customization similar to what I just described with the other two trucks will be about $32,800. It will be purchased through state bid. Mr. Chesney noted that we could have purchased a smaller truck, but in fact, it would have been more costly than the truck that we're proposing. The vehicle will provide maintenance greater flexibility addressing issues that come up while surveying the village on a daily basis. So with that, I move that... You want to go through each of the resolutions? Yes, yes. Let's go down here. I move that council approve Resolution 2016-6, which is Resolution Authorizing the Village Manager to Purchase Two Pickup Trucks, Two Pickup Trucks, from Bob Ross Auto Group.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-6, authorizing the village manager to purchase the two pickup trucks from the Bob Ross Auto Group. Are there questions or comments from council? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-6. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that 2016-6 passes unanimously.
Second resolution, I move that we, that council pass Resolution 2016-7, authorizing the village manager to purchase a pickup truck, a pickup truck from Buick GMC of Beachwood.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-7, authorizing the village manager to purchase the new pickup truck from Buick GMC of Beachwood. Are there any questions or comments? I mean, the one thing I do want to stress, and Councilman Warren commented on it, the village continues to do an excellent job of trying to extend the life of the vehicles as long as possible, and all of these vehicles were included in the replacement schedules in our long-range plan, so this is all completely consistent, and they were all budgeted for in the 2016 budget. So it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-7. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the Resolution 2016-7 passes unanimously.
Third resolution, I move that council pass Resolution 2016-8, authorizing the village manager to purchase two snowplow mounting systems for the two large trucks that we just passed.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-8, authorizing the village manager to purchase the snowplow mounting systems. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-8. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted, Resolution 2016-8 passes unanimously.
Fourth resolution, I move that council pass Resolution 2016-9, authorizing the village manager to purchase accessories for Maintenance Department vehicles. These are the sirens, the lettering, and light bar, thank you, for the trucks, thank you.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-9, authorizing the village manager to purchase accessories for these Maintenance Department vehicles. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-9. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted, Resolution 2016-9 passes unanimously.
The last item from our committee is the Ordinance 2016-2, which is authorizing the village manager to dispose of certain vehicles. So these are the three vehicles that we will be disposing, replaced by the new vehicles that we've just passed, that we just passed in resolution. Let me make sure I have this right. So do we need to, first, do we need to first make a motion to waive the three readings before we pass the, before we make a motion to pass the ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay. So I move that council, I move that council waive the three readings for Ordinance 2016-2.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on Ordinance 2016-2. Are there any questions or comments? I mean, the only thing I would say is, again, this is very consistent with all our finance-type measures, where it is, it's necessary for the village to move forward on this type of thing with, with good speed in order for us to maximize the value. And so, as we've talked about in the past, we, council has tried to minimize the cases where we waive the three readings, but in this case, I think it is appropriate, given the type of item this is. So it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on Ordinance 2016-2. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
So I now move that village pass Ordinance Number 2016-2, authorizing the village manager to dispose of certain vehicles.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2016-2, authorizing the village manager to dispose of the vehicles from the Maintenance Department that we are going to dispose. Are there any questions or comments on this?
I just want, just as reading from the ordinance, that the traded values are the, sitting at about $24,200 for the two vehicles, which is being offered by the dealer.
Any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2016-2. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
I have to add the emergency clause. So, should I read Section 3 of this emergency clause? Okay, so I move that council pass this ordinance as an emergency measure, as an emergency ordinance.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt this measure as an emergency measure, and all this does is allows the ordinance to go into effect with immediate effect. So again, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2016-2 as an emergency measure. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2016-2 as an emergency measure. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
And I assume that concludes the report of the Streets.
That concludes, that concludes the report of the Streets Public Utilities and Sewer Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now move on to the Land Development Committee. And as the Chair of the Land Development Committee, I'll be making the report. As we've talked about throughout 2015, one of the priorities for council in 2015 one of the priorities for council in 2015 was to try to move forward on, or make the next steps on the development of Amberly Green. We spent 2014 trying to understand more, you know, what the market potential was for the property. And as a result, this became our focus. We sent out in, in July, a request for letters of interest to various members of the development industry across the city and, and the state. And we got four letters of interest. And council and the administration has been spending the rest of the, of 2015 reviewing those letters of interest. We received four letters of interest, one, they're all from groups of, of people that have been brought together to deliver the expertise that is going to be needed for that, to deliver the development of Amberly Green. And they were from Great Traditions and, and other members of that team, from Dove Limited, from project planning consultants, and finally from Amberly Development Partners. Public meetings were held with each, with each party to go through their proposals. And then we also went through a process to issue some, some follow-up questions to each of the parties. And then we, we met with three of the parties, between the, the village manager and myself, and then one of the parties we met in a public meeting. I think as we went through this process, to no surprise, it became very clear to us that this was not something that lent itself to, you know, straight, you know, low bidder, very objective measures. It was, it, it was very difficult to make judgments in this case. We tried to put measures to it, but, you know, the measure, even the measures didn't work that well because it didn't necessarily take into account the importance of the different measures as we considered this. The one thing I want to talk about first is, as we went through this, we, the village's objectives from this remain the same. And I, I think we, we need to talk, I want to mention those objectives. Number one is to maximize the economic benefit of Amberly Green to the village. I mean, this, Amberly Green has a long history, as we all know. But we, it is very important that we maximize the economic benefit. And when I talk about the economic benefit, it is not just how much we can sell it for, anything like that. It is the benef, the economic benefit that will be derived to the residents of Amberly Village. And some of that is soft economic benefits. It's, it's things like how much pleasure they'll get out of it and so forth. So that is something we're always focused on. The second objective is land use consistent with the needs of the village. And, and what that means is, we don't want to necessarily go out and use that property for something that is not needed for the village, obviously. It's the incorporation of green space and buffer areas and open space to accommodate community use. The property is, is, I think, has been come, come very obvious over the last six months, is starting to be used a lot more by residents. On a nice day, it's not unusual to see 15 to 20 cars in the parking lot at times where people are walking and running on the property. We want to create unique opportunities to integrate the beauty and location and size of this property into the rest of the village in order to gain benefits to the rest of the residents of the village. We want to be very sensitive to the adjacent single families on, on the property. And that's, that's where we want to incorporate buffer space and, and green space, et cetera. We want to improve the economic health and sustainability of the village. We have development ideas that have been, we want to pursue these in a partnership between Amberly Village and whoever we choose as a developer. We want to minimize the village's financial contribution to that development. We want to retain, well, I should say Amberly is willing to retain ownership of the property at least until the nature of the development is clear. This is one of the big advantages we have right now, is because we control the property, we very much can control the nature of development. And that is what our residents have made very clear to us. They want to retain that property until it is very clear what we're doing and the residents will be involved in discussing what we're doing. And then finally, obviously, we want any development to be very aesthetically pleasing. The Land Development Committee very much used those objectives in trying to make decisions with respect to this. The four proposals were all excellent proposals. And the one thing the committee very much recognizes is that this is going to be a process that we go through in determining exactly what we're going to do on that property. Part of that process will involve discussions with the residents of Amberly Village as we move forward. And so as we started talking about, how do we make this decision? I think what became clear, at least to me and I think to other members of the committee, is that one of the key things will be alignment with the village. And we've talked about this over the last year, that one of the ways we can achieve alignment is getting, having residents involved in the, in development. And in fact, two of the teams, namely Dove Limited and Amberly Development Party, Partners, had, had good resident involvement. The next was, we're going to have to be very, whoever we choose is going to be, have to be very creative. The one thing that I think has been very clear to us is that we may go into something on day one with some ideas of what we're going to do, but those are going to change. They'll change for all kinds of reasons. They'll change because of traffic study, because of, of the nature of that property, which has some slopes and so forth that are very challenging. It'll change because we may want to do something a little different for our residents and so forth. So the, the specific ideas that may be there on day one will not necessarily be what we want to move forward. And so we need to have someone that we're working with, that we can, that, number one, we can work with, and that would, that will be very creative. And with that, the third one, and ties into that, is there's going to have to be incredible flexibility on both our sides. Amberly Village, the residents, and, and the developer is going, are going to have to be flexible to respond to these, these changes. You know, we've talked a lot about, at what point are we going to have further discussions with our residents about what we're going to do? And, you know, clearly, we want to be clearer as to what we think we want to do on that property. But when we go out to residents and they have a conversation, that has to be a real conversation and, and receive the input, and therefore the plan will need to be very flexible. So, as I said, it was, it was not easy making this decision. The committee talked about it and, and finally, the committee came to a conclusion to recommend to council that we attempt, or we, we want to, I want to make a motion to authorize the village manager to enter into negotiations with Amberly Development Partners to move forward on this development. That contract will be first stage in development. It is, it is by no means a full development agreement. This development agreement will evolve as we go through time. And I think, in, in the event that we cannot move forward with Amberly Development Partners, then I think the committee did rate the other ones. And, and the second party that we, we would be looking to go to would be Dove Limited at that point. But, you know, we're hopeful that we can move forward on, on this basis. And so as I say, I would like to make a motion to authorize the village manager to enter into, enter into negotiations on a development agreement with Amberly Development Partners.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we authorize the village manager to enter into a, or enter into negotiations with Amberly Development Partners. And before I ask the council as to whether there's any questions or comments, I do want to recognize Councilwoman Conway, who wants to say something.
I am recusing myself from this vote because my brother-in-law, Rob Smijunas, is a member of the Amberly Development Partners Group.
And I, I do want to comment on that. Councilwoman Conway has no financial interest in this. And, and we went through a conver-
Can I just say?
Yeah.
It's to avoid any appearance of conflict of interest. There is not an actual conflict of interest, but just to be very, very above board about it.
Thank you for, all right. With that said, are there questions or comments? This, the, the whole construction bond and those kind of things will be part of the discussion that we have in. I, I think the reality is, a construction bond, given the, given the nature of what we're doing in this first phase, which is really just trying to lay out what we're going to do, the construction bond will be more appropriate as we really move forward in, in development. And that will be a requirement of anybody that, that we start development on. But in this first phase, where we're just looking at trying to come up with a plan, I'm not sure that the construction bond will- Scott, you want to comment?
Councilmember Bardak, I think that's a very legitimate question to ask. But at this point, we are still in the infancy stages of talking about the agreement. I think it's very legitimate to raise that question in these discussions. And I would anticipate that anybody that we enter into an agreement with would be able to deliver on a construction bond. But at this point, there are quite a few details that need to be worked out prior to getting into that discussion about the bond. But it is so noted that that's an item that we have an interest in.
The Jewish Community Center issued a letter at the same time as the four letters of interest. And in that letter, the Jewish Community Center basically said to Amberly Village that they were interested in participating in discussions around the development because they had some very specific ideas about potential things that they might want to do on the property. And so one of the things, you know, Amberly Village and the Land Development Committee is, is keen that that, that, those discussions in fact take place. And so one of the things that will be put in any agreement that we sign with anyone will be a requirement that the developer have conversations with the Community Center to see whether there's some, something that can be done jointly as we move forward. And we will also be involved in those discussions. That is, obviously, the Jewish Community Center is a very important resident of our village. It is critical that we, we take that into account. It was, we never truly went down to, tried to narrow it down to two or anything. There was conversation at the, the last meeting. And, and ultimately, we went around the group. One of the committee members recommended that we actually go forward with Great Traditions. Another committee member recommended that we go forward with Amberly Development Partners. And that was actually seconded. We then had a conversation around how we would rate, rate them all. And I think, you know, the feeling, as I said, because in the end, you know, if, if somebody had come in, come in with something that just overwhelmed us, then I think alignment and resident involvement would not have been as critical. But given the requirement, and I will ask the Vice Mayor if she has any input on this. I think, given the nature of this thing and, and the real challenge of really putting together this development, I think in the end, we just felt that resident involvement was, was one of the, the key items to ensure, ensure alignment. And so that was why those two ended up being wanted to.
Well, I was on the committee and I've been on the Land Development Committees for as long as we've been discussing the most recent discussions of Amberly Green. And I was present for all of the expert opinions on the property last year and the year before, and then very involved in this year's meetings as well. And, and just to reiterate what I had said at our last committee meeting, I, I don't think Amberly could have gone wrong with any of the four. You know, they all had something to offer in very strong, positive ways. But for myself, I, I feel that it's very, it was very important to have Amberly residents undertake the development of the property. And the, the two groups that, that presented to us, both Dove and Amberly Development Partners, they, you know, being residents, they, they understand the property. They understand the psychology of surrounding the property, which is, to me, one of the most, you know, the primary things is, we all, many of us went through the keep Amberly Green stage. And both of, you know, the Amberly groups understood that. They both seemed to want to work with the JCC. They understand the JCC. But, and for myself, and coming out, it was very close, but coming out with the Amberly Development Group ahead, I was impressed with their more holistic ideas and plans for the property. And I felt that that, knowing Amberly residents, that would be something that our residents would, you know, would appeal to them. There was a lot of green space proposed, it was unique ideas. And, you know, I agree with, with everything Tom said in his description of, of our meetings and how we met. But it, it was tough. It was tough.
The, the term preferred development agreement is something that we had a lot of discussion. The, I, I consider the, the term preferred developer is something that will, this is going to be a development agreement. And the terms, the, whoever we choose wants to be the preferred developer. But what will be laid out in this development agreement is specifically, and this is one of the things that the village manager needs to lay out with, with whoever we choose, is upon, in what case would we move forward with them as a developer? And in which case we would not? And if we do not, what happens in that, that event? And that'll all be negotiated and laid out as we move forward. Now, now, obviously, our expectation, since one of our objectives is to minimize our financial contribution, you know, this, you're going to have this tension point. If we're asking someone to spend a fair amount of money doing studies and so forth, they're obviously going to be, want some protection in that agreement in the event we do not move forward. And that's, that's what needs to be negotiated. And again, that- The, especially in cases where, you know, it's, it's a study or something that will benefit any development that we go forward with, then I- benefit any development that we go forward with, then I think higher likelihood that we will share in some of those costs. Because we're, we're going to want to own that particular piece of work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. A question. For tonight's meeting, we received three documents that were basically in response to questions that the village manager had sent to the four parties. And so I know we, the one, the one document we didn't receive was from Amberly Development Partners. So is there a reason?
Can you hear me?
A question I have is, we received documents from three of the four potential developers of the site. The one item we didn't receive was from Amberly Development Partners. And so the question I had was, is that available? Or, because we had, we had asked each of the four potential developers a list of questions. And so it's.
Yeah, we did ask each of the, the possible developers a list of questions. We did not require that the questions, the answers be submitted in writing. And in the case of Amberly Development Partners, they gave their answers orally initially to the village manager and myself. And then we, we met to discuss those. And separately, I know the Vice Mayor separately on her, on her own, met with Amberly Development Partners to go through those questions.
But we have no, but we have nothing to directly compare, I mean, before us, in terms of how they replied.
That's, you, you don't have their answers on, on paper. You have, what we have are notes that the village manager and the mayor took in, in meeting with them and reporting to the committee. And then I met with them and went through the questions separately. And I, initially, I was very concerned about that because I wanted also to see the answers to that question. I wanted to know because I was going to have to vote and make a recommendation to the committee and, and, and I wanted some more information. And the bottom line is, well, our meetings, I mean, we got the same answers when we, when we discussed it and, we, we got the same answers. There was nothing, nothing different. But also, the answers to, that everyone submitted were not, I mean, they were answers, yes, but they, they were virtually the same across the board regardless of who was answering the questions. It was almost like an exercise in answering questions. I know that, that, you know, that's.
I mean, I, they.
That is what it was.
One of the, the questions that was posed to Amberly Development Partners that was specific to them, that we were very concerned with, was that they did not have any expertise from the standpoint of residential development in that. And they specifically addressed that and have added, what's the name of the, the group that, Ackerman?
Ackerman is the last hyphenated name. I don't, I can't recall the first part of it, but Ackerman, yes.
And, and they, they have done residential development. And most recently, the development that they were, the lead developer on was the university station at Xavier University, right there on Montgomery Road and, I should know the name of the street, but.
Dana.
Dana?
It's not Dana.
Oh, Cleary.
Cleary. Okay. Other questions? It's not appropriate to take questions from the audience, from the council.
You're being so kind.
It's not, we do not take questions from the audience.
It's not questions, these are statements.
It's, it's still not appropriate. In order to be, for a council meeting, the, our charter requires someone to register to make an address at council. We do, at committee meetings, they're completely open, but at council, you know, we, we try to adhere to that principle because other.
You're being loud, you're being.
That's fine. Any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we, that we adopt a resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into discussions with Amberly Development Partners to try to move, to get to the point of a development contract to make the next steps on the development of Amberly Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You abstained? Okay. So we have a measure with a vote of three in favor and two abstentions and one, I was going to say one recused. So three abst-
What were the votes again? Was it two abstained or recused and four?
Three.
Three abstained.
Yeah, you need four.
How, how come you're not voting no? Do you mind if I ask why, why the abstentions are not voting no?
Sure, I'll tell you why I'm voting no. I'm, I'll tell you why I'm abstaining. I felt that, considering that we had asked all four potential developers to submit answers to the questions, and it's not that I don't trust any of the council members, okay? But we did ask them for a formal reply. And it's disappointing that we didn't get a formal reply from Amberly Development Partners.
We did not ask for a formal reply. We asked, we specifically said, you, you have three options of how to respond, and it was either in a public meeting, either with just Scott or with Scott and a member of, and there was no requirement to have anything in writing.
Sure. Well, then, well, then I would, then I would ask that just as, you know, we have this, we asked each of the developers a list of, we had a list of questions for each of the developers, and you had a committee meeting, that the committee report out what Amberly Development Partners.
We could prepare a document.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
I would agree with you for one. I don't give anything to go by. But looking from the agenda today, it wasn't prepared, this was going to be the status. Just said the Land Development Committee needs to run it. From that perspective, I'd like to leave a little more before I make a decision.
Okay. So we will get a document out in the next week. I don't see the need to have a special council meeting for this. We will just defer this until the February meeting.
Can I make a request that when additional documents are sent to council that also include, that we also include the minutes from the land development meeting of December 22nd where it's, and, and the prior meeting as well, where the options are given? The, the meeting, it's of the December 22nd meeting. Well, you can, any, any of the minutes that detail what, what the options were given to the developers, and then also you'll see there was discussion about, this exact discussion, why didn't we receive written from everybody?
Okay. And I, I do want to, you know, as we've gone through this over the last five months, the committee meetings have been attended by most council members. I agree, the December 30th meeting, I know probably was not attended, but most council members have attended those meetings. So I think, by and large, the committee members versus council, the, most of the information that is in the hands of committee members are also in the hands of every member of council. Okay. We will now move on to the manager's contract, and I will handle this. As, this, this process started back in November, where we went through the process to complete the manager's evaluation for the year 2015. And then at the end of November, there was a, a execu, or a executive committee meeting or whatever of the council. And then at the December council meeting, we made a recommendation to amend the manager's contract to include a 2% increase in base compensation. So today, I'm here before you, ordinance 2016 dash three, authorizing an addendum to the village manager's contract to incorporate that 2% increase in base pay. So I hereby move that we adopt ordinance 2016 dash three.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2016 dash three, amending, and I, first, I need to apologize. I, I violated my advice to all my other fellow council members. I should first move to waive the three readings on this particular ordinance. And the, the reason that we want to waive the three readings on this is that we would like to have this amendment put in place as soon as possible, and we do not see any need to delay putting that in. So I hereby move that we waive the three readings with respect to ordinance 2016 dash three. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on ordinance 2016 dash three. Is there any questions or comments related to that?
I just wanted to add a comment. I guess another reason to waive it is that, as you know, we went through a very detailed process of village manager review that took several months. And so, and we were all in agreement, basically, or we, hopefully, we will be in agreement passing this, this ordinance. And, and so this process has been quite thorough. Thank you.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on ordinance 2016 dash three. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Hank Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
I will now make a motion to adopt ordinance 2016 dash three, authorizing an addendum, addendum to the village manager's contract.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2016 dash three. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance, ordinance 2016 dash three. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Hank Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
And finally, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this ordinance 2016 dash three and, as an emergency measure, which will allow the ordinance to go into effect with immediate effect.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2016 dash three as an emergency measure. Are there any questions or comments? If not, please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Hank Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
Okay, we'll now move on to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple items I wanted to point out in the manager's report. The leaf collection has concluded as of December 31st, and some interesting numbers. We, we made 11 rounds throughout the village, so 11 complete circuits of the village, and we collected over 240 loads of leaves, which equates to a little over 4,800 cubic yards of leaves. And an interesting note here is that number is very similar to what we collected last year. So it's just within three or four loads or three or four cubic yards of collecting the same amount. So it is very, very consistent. But now that we have concluded the leaf collection, we are doing brush pickup back on an, on a, on a daily basis. Also wanted to mention that deer calling has concluded for, for 2015. We went out in December, and the number of total deer called for 2015 was at 39. So that's the number that was called for the, for that particular year. Would also mention that the village's engineering firm, which is CT Consultants, has submitted their fee schedule for 2016, and there is not an increase in the fee schedule. So their, their rates have actually been flat since about 2014. And they have continued providing a very good service to, to the village, even with their transformation from, from CDS to CT Consultants. So the 2016 fee schedule reflects the continuation of their commitment to the village. I also wanted to mention that the litigation process for the lawsuit that was filed by a resident regarding the police levy in 2013 has concluded. Initially, the common police court granted judgment in the favor of the village, and the claimant appealed. The appeals court ruled in the village's favor, and the claimant appealed it to the Ohio Supreme Court. And then last month, the Ohio Supreme Court did not accept the appeal, and so therefore there are no further appeal processes available on this, on this matter. And the last item I wanted to mention is that we circulated in December the, the 2016 council meeting dates. Council may want to reschedule a particular meeting if it has a conflict with any particular holidays. The only one that we could identify was the one in, that occurred in June. So if council was interested in rescheduling that, this would be the time to do that through a motion. Or if you want to consider different dates, we can take care of that at the February council meeting.
It is appropriate that we change the date.
Don't we have a policy if we can't do it that night, we do it the next night or something? Or there is, or a custom of doing that?
There is a custom of doing that, but you have the, you passed an ordinance last year that enabled you to change the date of a council meeting through a motion. So at, at this point, if there is a particular date that you want us to take a look at.
Could I make a proposal? I mean, that we, June 13th is the scheduled date.
Correct.
So if we, consistent with what Councilwoman Conway suggested, that we consider moving it to June 14th, we'll make the motion to move it to June 14th at our February meeting. So if everyone could check their agendas. And in the meantime, if there is a problem with June 14th, please let the village manager know. And if there, if there's not, then we will make a motion at the February meeting to move the meeting to June 14th.
Make a note, June 14th is flagged, then.
Nicole, would you resend whatever you sent with the, the upcoming council meeting dates? Because I don't recall getting it, and I'm looking at my mailbox now, and I don't see anything.
I couldn't find it either, actually.
With that subject heading.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for the manager?
I have one question. Thirty-nine deer. Is that thirty-nine deer in addition to what was called in the early part of 2015?
No, that is the calendar year. So we look at it from a calendar year. So for January through December, a total of 39. And the resolution that council, the policy established allows up to 50.
Right. And so we are finished calling for the calendar year or for the?
For the calendar year.
Winter?
For the calendar year. Actually, we're, there's, we're calling tonight, so.
Oh, okay.
No, I didn't get a text.
Okay, are there?
Or the dates.
We had anticipated taking them out for the winter season because it makes it difficult for snowplows to go over them. In the month of, I believe it was either the month of October or November, the, the temporary speed hump on Elbrook was damaged. And it appears to have been damaged by a vehicle that was pulling, that was towing another vehicle or a trailer of some sort. And it appeared as though the, the, either the hitch or the bolts or something from that towed, towed vehicle dug down. dug down into the speed hump and actually ripped it out away from its placement in the pavement. So we made the necessary repairs, but it brought to light that the speed hump definitely is not considered a permanent type of speed hump when it comes to snow plowing or any kind of movement that's going to be forcing it to move one way or the other. So it was our plan to remove them during the winter or during the snow and ice season. But then after we saw that damage, it certainly solidified that, yes, they did need to be removed before they were forcibly taken out.
Are there any other questions or comments for the manager?
So does that mean they will never be put back?
No.
They're going to put them back in the spring as planned?
The only concern about the one on Elbrook is that because of the damage that was done to it, it may not be able to go exactly in that same spot.
I see.
But they can be reinstalled. They are, because they are temporary and they are mobile, but it takes a lot of work to install them and as well as remove them, yes.
And on speed bumps, so those speed bumps were placed there on the recognition of the Health Education Welfare Committee to gauge their effectiveness in slowing down traffic on George Street and on Elbrook. And the committee has not met to discuss their, how they work, but I have heard a lot of positive feedback about them and a lot of requests for more. So we'll be keeping your next...
Any other questions or comments? If not, we will now move on to the chief's report.
Thanks. I got one item, and that's to announce the retirement of Detective Jeff Norton. Jeff has been with the department since May 4th. Did you have something else? Sorry. May 4th of 1990. Jeff came to Amberly from the village of Lachlan. Within the police department, Jeff has served many different roles with the department. By 1993, he was actually promoted to a part-time position of detective, and that was under Chief Vieri Benner. Jeff served in that capacity for a number of years, at which time Chief Monahan promoted him in 2002, full-time detective. By Jeff staying in a detective role and not taking a leadership role in this department has actually been a godsend for the department. We not only ended up with probably the best detective in Hamilton County, but we also ended up with a silent leader within our department. It actually has developed a lot of younger officers and actually pushed our department in a good direction. Jeff has gotten many dozens and dozens of accommodations within the department, as well as I was going through his file today. There's, from the prosecutor's office to the treasures department, from the FBI to all local jurisdictions, has sent letters thanking him for his leadership, for his assistance on crime scenes, and different things like that. I can tell you that talking to the prosecutor's office, he prepares no case, and he's prepared like no other when it goes there. If there's an opportunity to get a conviction in a case, Jeff's going to get it. We basically, within the department, we just want to thank Jeff for his years of service. He's served 25 years of his 33 years of police career with Amberly Village. We are blessed to have him, and we wish him the best on his retirement, and thanks for the service that he provided to the residents of Amberly.
And I think Jeff, being the humble man he is, did not want to have anything at this meeting or anything as far as recognition. I mean, I did see him last week, and the one thing I commented, and it kind of ties into what you said, is that, you know, a lot of times we use the words, you know, a person really made a difference. But in this case, it is obvious that he's made a tremendous difference amongst all the police and really instilled a real culture into the department that'll last a long, long, long time. And that is his contribution to the department and the village and so forth. So it's a real credit to him.
I 100% agree. The manager actually presented him with a plaque. Were you going to speak?
I was going to miss that.
Okay, sorry. I'll go ahead and pass it off to him first.
As you know, Jeff, Detective Norton, did not want any kind of recognition, and ultimately it came down to he hosted his own retirement luncheon. He did not want the village to do anything, but I did take upon myself to present him with an acrylic plaque from council recognizing him for his 25 years of service to Amberly Village. So he did receive a very nice accommodation from the council on your behalf.
You know, I said a lot of things at Jeff's retirement, but there's one thing, one analogy I used, and I had to kind of explain it later to a few people, was anybody that knows baseball and knows how things work within an organization, you have, you know, you have a coach, your manager, your coaches and team captains, but you also have your franchise player, which is your go-to guy, the guy that's kind of like the foundation of your department. He doesn't have a main leadership role, doesn't carry that title of a leader within your department, but he's more of a leader than anyone else within your department. And, you know, I personally gave Jeff a bat with that franchise player tag on it, and he means that much to the department. And, you know, I just hope that the guys around him, you know, took the time to learn from him, and we're going to move forward. Thanks.
Any questions for the chief? If not, we'll move on to the mayor's report. I have three items. First, on the ESC, the Environmental Stewardship Committee, the first meeting of 2016 will be two weeks from this evening, January 25th, at 7:00 in the community room, related to the ESC. And it'll tie into kind of what I comment on later. The Environmental Stewardship Committee is looking for a couple new members, so if there's any interest in serving on that particular committee, please get your name into the village administration. And then finally, related to Environmental Stewardship Committee, there will be a program on February 18th on recycling. There will be a representative from Rumpke here. And, you know, a lot of times, we get a lot of questions around, you know, why is the recycling limited to what we have on our, on the top of our recycling bins? And this will be a chance to hear from the Rumpke representative. They will present a video talking about how they do everything, and they'll also talk about how we, the recycling today and the future recycling. So this will be a great opportunity. It will be February 18th at 7:00 in the community room.
Has the ESC considered having the program itself videotaped and then posted, uploaded? Is that, somebody suggested that a while back, and I forget who it was. Just a thought.
We'll look into that. Okay, next item I have, I think two months ago I said that I would give the, our annual report at the January meeting, so I will go through that this evening. This, I did this a year ago in December of 2014. We didn't do it in December this year because we had a long agenda with the budget, but I just wanted to go through the annual report. Council met 13 times in 2015, and committees met approximately 60 times. We entered 2015, and when I talked about this at the end of 2014, I talked about our priorities for 2015, and I just wanted to comment on those priorities. First priority, we said, was finance. And we wanted to continue to improve the financial condition of the village. And some specific things I want to note is that we continue to have good results, increasing some what I would call non-traditional revenues for the village. Specifically, the JED that we are in with Sycamore Township, the revenues for 2015 will be over $100,000. So this was a revenue item that did not exist as of three years ago and is now generating in excess of $100,000 for us. The rental on our cell tower at the north site is also generating revenues of almost $100,000 on an annual basis and continues to increase as more and more items get put on this cell tower. So again, a good item for revenues. During 2015, we did reduce the stormwater fee by 30%, and therefore, residents should, in the water bill that residents are paying this month, they should see a reduction in that particular fee by 30%. We continued, it was mentioned earlier, because of not anything council does, but excellent work on the part of staff, we continue to have good results on our grant applications. And this is alleviating some of the need for us spending our own dollars on key items. And the last item I would comment on finances is that, again, staff have maintained a great discipline on spending. You can see that in everything that they do, and it was even more clear as we went through the budgeting process for 2016. The next item, which we said was a priority, and it just came up earlier, was related to pedestrian safety. And the first thing I would say is that when I comment on 2016 priorities, I won't say pedestrian safety this year. And that is because I think it has effectively become part of our just regular conversation. It doesn't need to be necessarily a priority. It has become part of our process, is that pedestrian safety is something we talk about on a regular basis throughout the year. But during 2015, there were, the vice mayor's committee held regular meetings on the subject. In addition to the speed bumps that came up earlier, there were additional signage placed at various points in the village. And then a key item, I think, related to pedestrian safety, we collected a lot of data on speeds on key streets, and that has led to some of the things that we're doing on speed bumps, et cetera. And then finally, they are looking at the possibility of sidewalks for part of Elbrook, and we're going to be looking at that in 2016. The next item that we said was a priority was police equipment and training. And that really became, we focused on that as a priority because it has been in the news a lot because of high-profile issues that have occurred across the nation. So the police and fire committee very much focused on that in 2015. And similar to the pedestrian safety, it won't be a priority for 2016 because, again, it has become part of the police and fire committee's specific process, so we don't need to focus on it. But specific things that were done in 2015 was we did get additional license plate readers. And again, kudos to the staff that we were able to get these additional license plate readers at no cost because we identified opportunities from the city of Cincinnati to get those readers from the city of Cincinnati. We replaced out-of-date in-car video equipment on two cars, and we now have in all the cars up-to-date video equipment. And I think that is, you know, we saw in the police and fire committee the better quality that this delivers and creates a much safer environment for our police officers. One item which the police and fire committee worked on was the, and specifically staff worked on, was police accreditation. And in fact, what we, the decision was made to no longer go for police accreditation. And I think, again, this is completely consistent with the focus on getting the right equipment, getting the right training, that this, the accreditation process served us very well for 15 years, and it was determined that it really was not a priority because of what had been achieved over the 15 years. And so this frees up time for additional training and focus on things that are critical for having a safe police force, which is the thing that we're really after. And then finally, we're moving forward to add a K-9 unit in the police force, which, again, is an additional tool that will be available to the police and is something that we, the police previously used when Gulf Manor had a K-9 unit, and we were able to use that. Gulf Manor no longer has a K-9 unit, and in fact, there's no police units anywhere in the area that have a K-9 unit. We do use Cincinnati on some things like bomb sniffing and so forth when it's necessary, but it's been, but we determined that this would be an additional, good thing to add to our, basically, bag of available equipment and things. So that will be something put in place in 2016. The next item that we said was a priority was streets. And the reason that that was a priority was, again, we had allowed, we'd gotten behind on our street program over the years that we had to defer many things. So in 2015, that was focused on as a priority. A number of things that was done, one thing that we entered into a joint bidding with the village of Silverton, and that reaped some benefits as far as lower cost. The 2015 program was almost $400,000. And so, again, we're hopefully starting to catch up. And then we were not successful on it, but we did try to get a grant for the North and South Farmcrest, which is the highest dollar item that the village is facing as far as expenditure. We were not successful on that application in 2015, but we will try again in 2016. And then the final priority for 2015 was Amberly Green, which we talked about earlier, and the north site, and moving forward, and that is something we've talked about throughout. So those were the priorities. As we move forward to 2016, I list three priorities. One is finance again, and specifically related to finance is developing a plan related to the police levy beyond, the police levy is in effect through 2017, but we need to develop the plan for the period beyond that. The north site in Amberly Green is clearly going to be a priority for us in 2016. And then finally, a key priority will be communication. And on communication, two big things that we really need to focus on communicating with our residents about, number one is finances. We, I think we went to residents two years ago to give a kind of a feedback loop on where we are on finances. We need to do that at least one more time in 2016, if not two times. So we will have to be doing some town halls. And then specifically, Amberly Green, we will need to communicate quite frequently with residents. And specifically, after we do ultimately decide on the next steps for Amberly Green, shortly thereafter, we will have to go to our residents to explain what we're doing on the green, et cetera. So that is my annual report for 2016. Are there any questions or comments on that? And then the last thing on my mayor's report is, again, on our openings for the council seat and the openings for the planning commission seat. Those have been posted on various social media. The deadline for submissions related to the opening council seat is this Friday, January 15th, and the planning commission seat?
January 20th.
Is January 20th. And council, once we get all those applications in, council will be meeting, not the, it'll be the week of the, I think, the week of the 20...
25th.
Week of the 20.
Do we have a date yet?
I'd sent out several dates to keep on hold until we see how many people have applied for the position so that we know how many dates to take. But I did ask a tentative hold on certain dates.
I thought that, my understanding of the request was that you, we were going to try to have all candidates within... to try to have all candidates within that long, I mean, each one was like four hours?
It was four days and big blocks of time.
I had asked council to look at different dates, and putting the range of time from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. But not knowing how many candidates at the time, I don't know if I'm gonna have 50...
So were you thinking we'd meet one of those days with the candidates?
One or two, depending on how many we have. If we have two candidates, we could take care of that at once. But if we have 40, we're gonna be doing it, you know, quite a few.
Is it possible that maybe we could at least narrow it down to two?
It's only, it's three right now.
It's three days.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of that week, I believe. And one day...
We're holding a lot of time.
Are we, who is choosing the planning commission member? Is it the...
That's an appointment of the mayor with concurrence of council.
Okay.
So once I receive the applications for planning commission, then I'll forward those to the mayor. And then that, they will be vetted that way.
Yeah, we will send those to all council members.
I was gonna say, it'd be nice to see them all.
My intent is, this is an appointment of the mayor, but I think, consistent with, as long as we're going through the process...
Well, if we have to concur, it'd be nice to know what we're concurring with.
Right. And so my intent would be to hold a very similar process that we're doing for the council member seat. And on the council member seat, it's the council's intent to make that appointment by the February meeting. So, you know, all our process that we're going through is, hopefully leads to us in a position to make a recommendation and make that appointment at our February meeting.
And this is at large? So you can live anywhere in the village?
So with that, that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any questions or comments? If not, we will move on to new business, and I know the vice mayor has an item.
Thank you. The snow, our first snow, so that means the Amberly Garden is now accepting applications for next summer's gardening. And this is the time. Plots are $50, and we encourage you to get your application in by February 1st. Prior year's gardeners, this means this immediate preceding year will have priority. And then any remaining plots go on a first-come, first-served basis. The gardening season is advertised as being April through November, but I will say we don't hold anyone to that November. And a year like this one, I actually harvested a lot of gorgeous broccoli on Christmas Day. So the garden has been very successful in past years. There's a lot of support. If you've never gardened before, we have, you can go to Civic Garden Center, or get, or ask questions, and learn how to garden. It's a very rewarding experience. You don't have to be a member or a resident of Amberly to garden. And just a great way to grow your own vegetables and meet your neighbors.
Are there any questions or comments related to that, or is there any other new business? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you.